Maybe, yeah. Then in 1929 it became mayor.
We almost bought the house on the end, on Tanglewild, in 2018. Which was the one...
Yeah, in Vine?
Yeah, the one on the corner, yeah, the one right here. Tanglewild and Vine, the one, the first one. We almost bought that one.
Wait.
So here's Tanglewild.
Right.
And here's Vine. This one right here. It sold, it was like, 2018 it sold. So a long time ago.
So up at our end it was...
Yeah, no, 2008. Yeah, it was, that next to it, on Tanglewild.
On the corner?
This has a Tanglewild address?
I don't know. We almost bought the house across the road, wasn't that Dr. Case's house?
Yes.
Yeah, we looked at it like five times. Doug, Doug Reddick.
Doug's a good neighbor.
Yeah.
The Cases were, are our best friends, so we...
I've played golf with Dr. Case many, many, many times.
Oh, yeah? Did you beat him?
Sometimes. He's really good.
Uh huh. Thank you, my dear.
He's good, he's good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
You can keep that one, we'll share it.
Yep.
Yep.
Oh, I see.
There's two of them.
They moved up to the center.
He either liked his land or he didn't. Yeah, he needed you. He had that room which was all mahogany.
Where the house next to that.
On the same side?
Yeah.
Okay.
So white car.
I love mine, love mine. Just far away from the school, but you're so close to town.
Okay, good evening, and welcome to the November meeting of the Bronxville Planning Board. I'm Michael Goldman. Appreciate everyone coming out this evening. Our first order of business is to review and approve the minutes of the October 11th meeting. Has everyone had a chance to take a peek? Any changes, otherwise does someone want to make a motion?
So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Terrific, okay. So we have minutes from the October meeting. Our first order of business tonight is for Stonely. Is there someone here to speak for the applicant? If so, if you can go up to the mic there and identify yourself, that'd be great. Thank you.
Hi, how are you doing? My name is John Witor from New York...
You can use a pointer if you need to. I heard it there.
Alright, thank you. My name is John Witor from New York Stucco. We were approached about six months back to design canopies for the front of the building. They wanted to bring them in and enhance the look of the building from the old, I would say, a little bit sterile look with the flat entrance. Plus, they wanted to be able to extend it a little bit so that when they get to the front door, they don't have to get wet or in the snow as they go there. At the same time, they wanted to reduce the hardscape that overtakes that whole courtyard. And they wanted to bring back some of the greens. And they wanted to get some water...
It's a different entry.
Be able to get impervious surface. So what, this is before. This is the front main entrance at this point. So we believe, over the time of going back and forth with the owners and the board, I think we've reached a, actually a very nice goal. They hit their goal with trying to hit accented building and actually not take away from the building with the canopies that are designed there. The impervious surface, okay, if you stop there. So this shows the original hardscape. And the red is what we're taking away. So we're actually reducing the area of impervious surface. We're now allowing more to go back into the grass, plus the surface that we're putting in, which is concrete pavers, is going to allow more of the rain to go through the surface into the ground and not come out into the driveway that's out front there. Okay, so that's, in the end, this is the landscape that will look, what it will look like in the end. And, keep going, Paul. Okay, so this, so what we are doing also is, we didn't really want to disturb the building anymore, because it just went through some remodeling out there, which we did. So in order to get the canopy on without bothering the two canopies that already existed, we're actually encapsulating the canopies that are there. And we're mounting to the floor and the beam that actually carries those canopies, we're actually going over top of them.
Sir, you have a laser pointer right there.
Oh, sorry, yes. So we're going to tie our beam into this junction right here that will go over top of it. So we're putting no weight on top of the existing canopy that's there, so we don't have to add anything or remove it, which will end up just creating a, too much dirt and havoc to the area. Go a little further? Okay, that's just the footings. Okay, that's the top of it. Alright, so we're doing a steel design with a wood truss on top of it to get the arch that we're looking for. Keep going. Alright, and that shows how we're going to tie into the concrete, concrete subfloor that's there, or the concrete floor that's there. Keep going. And now we're, that's showing that we're going to do a standing seam roof, a rolled standing seam roof on top of it. Go ahead. Keep going. So in the end, that's what they're going, well, that's just the framing end of it and the structure, okay? So over top of the existing canopy on the main entrance, it's, what is it, about 30 feet long? I think it's like 30 feet long there. So they, we're not taking that off, so what they wanted to do is create a slight slope to it and put a standing seam roof on top of it, and just add to the beauty of the new design that they have there. Alright, that just shows we're going to hide the gutter, and, yeah, this is the, this is how we're going to lay the concrete pavers down, and what is entailed to do that. And that's the design. The design will be right here. This is the pattern that they're going to be going with the pavers. We also handed out beforehand, we handed out a before and after, along with a few pictures of the materials that we're using on there. Were you able to get the video, Paul? I do have it on my iPad. I can bring it up and you guys can view it there if you would like. I don't know if it's got to be on the screen here. We ended up doing a rendering to show what it's going to look like after the fact.
You have another idea, Christina? We need a 13-year-old. Exactly. If one of my daughters was here, this would be, I'll take care of her. I got it? Yeah. Okay.
Give it a try?
What music's playing? We have another technical assistant here. I guess we could hang it up here and at least take a peek, you know? The audience won't get to, but... And we can just watch you. Let's make sure they can see too, yeah. This is the after.
Yeah.
Yes, this is our...
And there are two entrances, right?
Yes.
This is the curb roof.
And new doors.
No, we will not be putting any doors.
Oh, they're the same?
There's minimal destruction of the building there now. Actually, no, we just pulled in two cop steel columns, don't worry about that.
It's a rendering, so renderings are always beautiful.
Yeah, that's nice.
Renderings are always beautiful, so...
We hope to actually make this a little work difference.
Yeah.
That's the second?
It's nice.
Is that an active driveway or is that a walkway driveway?
This is a walkway driveway, yeah.
So if you're in the way and raining, you can just hang on in there if it's raining out.
Yes, exactly. We were telling you about the seating area now, they didn't want that, they wanted to make sure it was just a nice entrance without people in the house, so they're leaving that to be out.
Yeah. It's great.
Thank you.
It's helpful, thank you. Okay, anything further on?
No.
On that?
Questions that I can answer for you?
Yes, so, questions from the board members?
Currently, it says Stonely across the top, and then it has numbers. Are those going to be...
Yeah.
Right, right. Is that going to...
We're discussing it now. They want something back in front, but they want to make sure it gets designed so that, and enhances that also, without being too gaudy. So yes, they need the one and they need the two, but maybe it goes to numeric instead of letters, and then we will get to Stonely in there at some point. Nothing overbearing.
Paul, does that need a design review committee approval? Do you know? It does? Okay.
Well, the...
But not, I mean, I mean the signage.
If we go back with the sign over top, I mean, we'd have to go back into the design committee?
It's a question for Paul.
Yeah, I think if they kept it, if they didn't change it, I think that would be fine. That would be good, but I think if it were a different font, size, and color, then it would also be a little bad.
But for the moment, they aren't proposing anything specific, so we don't need tact on it yet, I don't think.
No, we can bring that up as we go forward. They pick the font, and then we can put just the sign back in for review at that point, if you don't...
Yeah, and just to clarify, for the board, there was a review at Design Review a week ago, and this was approved at Design Review. So I guess our question would be, Paul, do you have any commentary on this?
No comments, I think it's a great addition, and decreasing impervious areas are a plus.
If there are more questions from the board, I think I'll open up the public meeting just to see if there's any, any comment from the public. And so we'll go ahead and open that up, see if anyone from the public would like to comment. Seeing none, we'll close the public meeting. Any discussion?
Seems like an improvement to me.
Looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it looks nice and improves the drainage and adds more green area, so it hits a lot of design goals.
Yeah. And I think that was the reaction, Jim and I were at the Design Review meeting, just observing, and their reaction was that this was an improvement, and, you know, they were favorably inclined toward this. So would someone like to make a motion on this front?
I move that we approve the exterior modification plans for 123 Stonely.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright, good luck. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so next item on the agenda, we have the team coming back from last meeting regarding 20 Parkway. Thanks for your quick turnaround of some of the materials. We know some people have been working very hard on this project, so if you can please introduce yourself on behalf of the applicant, and let's dive in.
My name is Steve Seacon, architect, working with Lauren Kraus and Brent Tesugi at 20 Parkway. And we were encouraged by your feedback last meeting, and, you know, subsequently with the DRC. So I'll start with the summary of the reductions and changes that were initiated from our meeting. And, you know, we got the memo, we, you know, basically narrowed each unit down, you know, to help reduce the FAR request in the variance, as well as the coverage, eliminating the non-conforming garage in the back, making the decks a bit smaller, reducing the front porches to the minimum viable depth, you know, to still be useful, shifted the generator in a more complying zoning, and then, of course, changing the driveway material on the south side to all pavers, you know, to help with infiltration. And, you know, in so doing, I think, you know, we've come away with a viable project that still, you know, needs a few variances, but I think is, you know, pretty much, you know, at the threshold of what I think, you know, meets the owner's needs, and, you know, hopefully addresses your concerns in kind of a rational manner. And be delighted to answer any questions, or, I know some of you were at the DRC meeting, you know, where there was some additional feedback, you know, I don't know if now is the appropriate time to address it, or...
Well, let's, let's, let's jump in here and get the dialogue going, and we appreciate how quickly after the DRC meeting you've, you know, provided an updated set of plans. Jim and I had a chance to sit in on the DRC meetings, so that's helped us get further up to speed. I think you may need to help the other members catch up as we go through, so, you know, we can, we can do that. Everyone was provided, you know, and Christina put up on the website the new plans. So we, we do have them, and I assume that's what Paul's working from. I think, you know, at the DRC meeting, I think they had a couple of concerns, right? They wanted to shift the driveways, they wanted things to be more shielded, everyone, I think, wanted to, you know, manage the size of the project. I think the issue I was hoping to focus on is, you know, the front setback. And that's been debated, I think, on both sides, and I think there are arguments to be made. I think at the DRC meeting, the feedback from the DRC was, if you could push the structure back, it would appear less imposing as a three-unit structure from the street. And that has its benefits. It also has issues in terms of not being able to reuse the existing foundation and taking the structure out of alignment with the other structures nearby. So if you could focus in particular on that open issue, you know, at least to me, that strikes me as the most substantive issue that we should, in fairness, dive into, so... Yeah.
Okay. Is it...
You have a pointer there somewhere, I think.
Yeah, I do also have 11 by 17s of the DRC. If that's helpful, or we could work digitally?
Would you guys like paper? You want to look at it on screen?
Right on the screen.
Yeah, we're, we're good.
Okay, great.
Yeah. So tell Paul where you want them, and he'll get you there.
Okay, so, Paul, on Monday, we sent you updated DRC PDFs, if that's possible?
Yeah, they were on the website. I don't know if that's what you're working off of...
It would be dated, there...
There's one marked 11-8. Oops.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. And just for the benefit of the board, the DRC has not had a chance yet to review these updated plans. They reflect their input, but ultimately, we'd want DRC to, you know, get their eyes on this.
Okay. Next time, we'll...
Well, then, we can do the hard copies then.
Why don't you give us the hard copies, to your point? Yeah, that'd be best.
We have this on...
It's new and improved, we don't have this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can share if you don't, do you have enough, or?
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Oh, no, these are new, because you switched the garage, right?
Thank you.
This was here?
Yeah.
This was for...
It was over here.
Isn't there a little rotate right there?
There's a rotate button.
There's a rotate button, two to the left of the dots.
Top circle?
You see it? Boom. You see it? Top right?
There you go.
I think that's upside down.
Now we're upside down. Alright.
So, in addition to October's Planning Board comments, we got comments last week on the first from DRC, as you stated. Mostly, there were concern with proximity and front yard setback. What we discovered through neighborhood analysis is that the average front yard setback is 18 feet. So because there's so much non-conformity, we were thinking that we're being more compliant by keeping the former, you know, street wall closer to where it was existing, and thereby reusing the foundation, you know, which is a cost-saving, is a more green, you know, method of construction, as well as preserving, you know, a corridor that seems a little bit more natural, rather than having, you know, the teeth kind of going back and forth, and I think that kind of, you know... So that was really our rationale, you know, with trying to, you know, build on the foundation and how we got there. So this scheme, you know, basically, you could see, this is where the front yard setback is, and, you know, basically prohibits us from, you know, in this scheme, moving it back to be compliant, we don't get that benefit. The other thing it does, of course, is that it moves, you know, three dwellings closer to the tracks by about five and a half feet, which, you know, if I'm renting, I wouldn't see as a benefit. But it also makes our rear yard setback variance bigger, which probably in the scheme of things, isn't that a deal? Because you're next to the tracks. But it is a small consequence. The other suggestion from the DRC, which I think is, you know, very well-received, and, you know, is basically flipping the driveways, you know, to give...
Speak to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Is flipping the driveways, so the four cars are parked at the north driveway and two at the south driveway. This allows for a little bit more planting, and, you know, the additional planting, which is a couple sheets away, gives us a little bit more depth and texture, you know, to break up the sidewalls. So that's, you know, easy, not a problem. The drainage, you know, by virtue of making a smaller footprint, now we have more capacity, you know, for drainage. So it's, right now, the drainage system is oversized, but that's neither here nor there. You know, the other thing that we also talked about is, you know, we reduced the degree of FAR variances and coverage variances, because when we slid the units back, we had formally had a small appendage here, about 150 square feet, which we were hoping to preserve, but by moving it, you know, the whole kit and caboodle back, it kind of negates that, and so we took that away. So that also helps in terms of FAR and coverage.
If you moved it back forward theoretically, would you add that...
Yes.
...space back?
I mean, it's, it's a fine space. It's, I think, about 12 by 15-ish, you know, nice little, you know, family room.
If we could, I think it'd be helpful if we could hear from the owner about preferences on the plus or minus five feet, if that's okay with you.
Alright, Lauren Kraus, owner of 20 Parkway, along with my husband Brent Tesugi. I mean, I think, and thank you for everyone who came today, I really appreciate it. I think that was important context to have. And one of the things that I expressed when we bought this house was, it was not the most attractive house on the street, and that was precisely why we wanted to buy it, because we saw opportunities to improve and enhance. But the most attractive part of the structure, in my opinion, is the foundation. It looks like it belongs in Bronxville. It's made of that stone, and it gives you that bedrock feeling that you see throughout the village. So preserving that foundation from an environmental and economic standpoint would be preferred. We've also had builders and contractors come through that space who said, "This is great. They don't make poured concrete foundations like that in today's standards." So it would be a shame to see it go. As Steve had alluded, you know, not only do we lose the 150 square feet, one of the other design details is, you'll see that now you're side to side, the middle unit and the unit on the right, which we would occupy, now you have two decks that look out upon one another. So there was kind of a staggered effect of extra privacy that I think would be preferred. I did hear in the audio remarks from... I did hear in the audio remarks from the design review committee about putting a porch on the front of the street and just my perspective from how we live on Parkway Road. And I think everyone who came today, I remember the day, my husband will recall it very clearly, when I said, "Oh, my gosh, we're like living on the parkway," when the trees, when the trees' leaves fall on the ground. And for that reason, I think you don't see people spending time in their front yards. And living with train noise becomes very much a part of the fabric of living on Parkway Road. And people have their patios and their entertaining space built out in the back. So for me, from just a utility perspective, taking what is, I'll call it, the unutilized space in the front yard where we don't have our kids play, because people do speed on that road, and reduce the unutilized, or maximize the unutilized space and reduce the most preferred space in the back, the sacred space where we entertain, you know, doesn't feel great. So for that reason, I, we strongly prefer the first design. I think you thought, you knew I would say that, but...
And I assume the right-hand unit is the owner's unit that you would occupy, and you'd rather have that additional bit of space if it was pushed forward and you could have that additional room?
Yeah. That would be, that would be our preference, yes.
Maybe if we could get the architect back up and get some questions from the board.
Last time you had a summary of, there were so many variances that were incorporated, right? And it seems like with the amendments that you've made, some of them have gone or they've been reduced. Is there any, do you have that, did you do a summary like that again?
Yeah, that is...
The right-hand, top...
The one which is...
In the really tiny type.
Oh, in the tiny type. Sorry, sorry. Got it. Okay.
But he can take us through.
Yeah, I'm happy to walk through it. Basically, from last month's to this version, there were nine changes. In summary, just try to go quick, narrowing each unit by a foot, removing the nonconforming garage, narrowing the decks of unit one and two, reducing the depth of the front porches, relocating the generator, new driveway location, new pervious pavers, shifting the location of all units possibly by five and a half, 5.4 feet, removing this, the single-story family room at unit three. Again, this is per the DRC. And then the driveway flip.
And so pro forma, if you didn't push back the five feet, you would still have made significant progress, but not as much progress.
Correct.
Yeah.
So you guys who went today, what was your feeling about the five feet?
Does someone want a mic or Jim?
I was persuaded that backyard space has a lot more value than front yard space. I stood there and listened to the trains go by, and they weren't as disturbing as the roadway and the parkway in the back. And there's still a decent amount of foliage that will disappear in the winter, so... And I think at the DRC, someone mentioned that having front yard space, you know, was a plus, but I don't think that's borne out when you visit the property.
Mike, anything you'd...
I think, I try to look at what the proposed changes would look like to the conformity of the block. And I think it, there is an alignment right now with where the front of the building is, lines up with pretty much all the houses to the north and to the south. So I guess what would extend is the front entrance porch, right, the steps up. But I think there is an aspect of the house, the main house, would be lined up with everyone else if you did not set it back an additional five feet.
Yes. If it's in a vacuum, pushing it back would help with the perspective, you know, but it's not in a vacuum. I think that's what we struggle with.
What was the average setback of the block? You said 17?
About 18.
18 feet? And the drawings that you had before, it looks like it's...
It's about 19.
19 feet? That was the ones that we got originally, or whatever.
And that aligns with the existing house, I think, the prior drawings, correct?
It is existing, nonconforming.
Yeah.
And then you're going to 24 and a half.
Right. And the existing enabled them to use the foundation.
Right. And then if you see in the other drawings, you see what she's talking about, the decks are a bit staggered and you have a little bit of more space. I don't know. There's the extra space there, the staggered decks. Would, if, I drive by all the time because I take everyone in the train or go to the train myself, but I think the setback is fine. I really like, I like the way that you have it so you have a three-unit and everyone has a little bit of space to themselves in the deck in the back, which you're not going to see from the front. And I would agree that that road becomes crazy at certain times of the day. Everyone's rushing for something. Would you still flip the driv, the driveways from four to two? Would you still have the, so if you had the house on the right, would you have the two on that side or would you have the four on that side?
I think it...
Because we have the originally one, the one, the bigger one on the right has four, and then the newer one is right here.
It has two, yeah.
Yeah. I think this arrangement, you know, irrespective of the shift, probably makes more sense.
You mean the car arrangement?
Well, the cars, as well as it provides better planting strips to buffer, you know, the, so I think, you know, that was a welcome observation.
Yeah, I think when the head of DRC brought it up, I think all our heads were nodding.
Yeah, I like the other plan of the setback the way it was, and I thought you've done a lot of other things. My other question, though, is, you know, we all have these driveways with five cars in it because everyone has a car, is that it's sort of, I'm not an expert, but it sort of looks like there's going to be a lot of talking to two units about who's going to go in, I need this car or that car. And then backing out in that street, I've never seen it happen, but I'm sure it can be quite dangerous. Do you have any comments on that?
I think...
Or you guys live, you live the backup, so...
Right.
If you wanted to say something about that. I get the one that's the same house on the right. If that's two, then, you know, you talk, but if it's two different families that...
Yeah.
Yeah, and my understanding is you're going to be stacked that way, so each unit is going to be vertical in terms of the...
I'm talking about the driveway in the left of the four.
Right, but they're also, it's, each unit has a vertical stripe of cars. Their two cars are lined vertically.
I see, but the narrow, it gets quite narrow
Yeah, yeah.
going into the street.
Right.
I'm just wondering, I mean, obviously, if they're two great friends, that's great otherwise.
Right. If I were going to operate a valet business tomorrow, all of the employees I would hire would be the residents of the street because parking's really an art form. And our neighbors, just as one example, they're in a triplex. It's the White House. As you look at ours to the left, and their driveway looks almost identical to this.
I've seen that, yeah.
And there's three. So each floor is owner occupant is on the first floor, and then tenants on the second and on the third. And they kind of artfully figure out how to park. In addition, all of our kids play basketball where all those cars are. So, you know, they're also backing out so that the kids can play basketball. So, you know, it works. It's like parking is at a premium in all of Bronxville. We figure out how to drive.
Does everyone ever go backwards in just to make it easier to get out, or you just...
We, that's how we park 100% of the time.
That's what I do.
Yeah. We definitely do that. The neighbors, they all, they all pull in. Theirs is a little bit wider, and they kind of do a three-point turn and turn around, but I think people will figure it out.
Yeah. Okay. I guess 11 feet's plenty to maneuver around. Thank you. But again, just to finish up, I sort of like the other, the setback the way it was.
Yeah.
I'm not a big fan of this new setback.
And just a little bit of the heritage of this, we formally had three curb cuts, and the consulting engineer was, you know, fairly adamant about trying to reduce. So part of that is in response to this and also so we don't lose more street parking. So, I mean, yes, I'm totally, totally with you. I would love to have an 18-foot wide curb cut there, but again...
Yeah. This is a series of compromises. We understand. Yeah. Yeah. Other questions for the architect or owner before we chat with Paul about this? Okay, Paul, maybe if we could get you to comment on the plan?
Okay, so I, I think we're all aware they've done, you know, several iterations reducing it. I think that it was originally thought if they could reduce that front yard setback, that would be beneficial, the most impact, but I think the board reviewing that, you know, you can kind of see the two different ways that they're doing that. You know, so I think that's really, really about it. I think they've worked very hard at reducing the variances needed, and that's about it. I don't know if you have any questions.
No, I mean, in terms of the sequence here, we'll talk about, you know, how we would review it, but, you know, it goes from us to zoning in any case in terms of, you know, given the variances here. So we, we can have a recommendation on that, but ultimately zoning will, you know, have some dispositive things to say about the, the project. But I think we all recognize that they went through some iterations with you and then with us and then with design review. So this has been vetted pretty, pretty thoroughly.
Yeah. Yeah, I would admittedly say they've given it great effort. I will reiterate the same as the last meeting, is, as a building official and life safety end of things, a new building built to today's codes and a flood-resistant building is an asset to the community.
Yeah.
So I stand with that, with this design as well.
Yeah. No, we recognize, I think, the flood mitigation aspects, and we had some of us the opportunity to tour the property today, and I think there's recognition that improvements would be welcomed on that side. All right, so why don't we go ahead and open up the public meeting, see if there's any public comment on this? And hearing none, we'll close the public meeting. Before we get into the discussion of the pluses and minuses procedurally, if we want to move this forward, we don't have final design review yet. They gave preliminary review, but they need to look at the final plan, which could be a hybrid of these, these plans that would be provided. But given the calendar, if we want to, what we could do is not take final action because it hasn't, design review, design review hasn't taken place yet. What we could do is send it along to zoning with a recommendation. And the recommendation would reflect the work that we put into it and our perspective and might be helpful to them as they consider it. They meet in about three weeks, I think. And then if they approve this, I think the sequence would be, it would go to design review in the first week of December and then come back to us for final action the second week of December. That's my understanding of, you know, it's been painful to date, there's still a little more to do, but I think that would, you know, help create a timeline that could help them plan a little bit. So with that, why don't we throw it open for discussion by the board?
I think for me, it was very helpful to go see the home today in terms of the challenge position it's in. You know, we deal with a challenge in our village of some dated homes that need to be updated, and it was clear this was not going to be renovated in its existing state. I think the proposal that they put forward, we've now seen two, when I think about the changes and the number of variances being asked, I think the variances are there, well, we have a code to protect homes from looking very different from each other. But what's interesting is when, with all the changes that they're making, I still think actually a lot of these changes fit in with the neighborhood, that despite the far ratio being above what the code says, it actually fits in with the ratio within the neighbors. The design fits in well with the neighbors. As to, and so I'm very supportive of being accommodative of those variances. While there are many, it's a unique situation. I think the other, I would, with respect to the front setback, I think you can always try to find a middle ground, but it seems almost either you do the existing setback and use the foundation or eliminate the foundation and push it five feet back. But if it's pushed five feet back, I do sense that the alignment of the houses, suddenly it's, you got everyone lined up and then this house is five feet back. Granted, with the porch, it will be aligned, but I think, when I think about the appearance, the housing appearance seems more important to me, the alignment. So I, I would be more supportive of keeping the first plan and not pushing it back five feet.
Okay. Other comments? Should we just work across?
I, I think I expressed my views a lot last week about being in favor of the variances because it, they were consistent. They ended up with a structure that was consistent with the neighborhood, as Mike said. And I think the changes proposed are helpful, you know, with the exception of the changes seven and eight, I think those, you know, I view the proposal as now having pulled changes seven and eight out, and so I'm supportive of that outcome.
Leslie?
Agreed. I think backyard space is way more important for all of us than, than front yard, no matter where you're on Parkway or any other street, quite frankly. And I also, I like the first plan and, you know, the, you know, you're living on top of each other, so if you have a little bit of privacy with your decks and things like that in the back, I think that's huge. So I, I agree, I like the, I prefer the first plan.
Albert?
Thank you all for all the hard work, and I agree with what's said across the board, eliminate seven and eight. And go ahead with the rest.
Our newest member. Let's go for it.
I watched the video of last week's meeting or last month's meeting.
And you stayed awake.
It was a long meeting. And I thought the owners made some really great points as far as what needs to be done on that street and you taking the initiative to do it. And I think you're, you're proceeding absolutely in the right way. You have the village in mind, you have the street in mind. So I agree with everything that's been said, Jim and Mike, and, and I think having the backyard bigger rather than smaller is more important, so I'd be in favor of the first one.
Well, I have nothing to add since I'm in agreement with what's been said. Does someone want to make a motion to send this with a recommendation to the zoning board without items seven and eight?
Yeah. I would recommend that we, I would recommend, I would move, that we recommend to the zoning board that the variances requested be approved for the plans submitted to us with the understanding that the changes in item seven and eight will be reversed, will be taken out, and...
And I'm assuming the owner is okay with that? We don't want to...
If I could jump out, I'd...
I understand, but we don't want to presume, so, yeah, yeah.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks very much. With that, we're going to adjourn the meeting. And our next meeting, hold on one second, will take place here on December 13th. We'll look forward to seeing you then. Thanks very much.
Motion.
We're done.
We'll get them to the next meeting anyways.
The minutes will show.
Okay.
And it was second.
All right. You'll probably have a different one, right? Yep.